So the motion is by Jacob, seconded by Chris Christensen for approval of the agenda. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Go to the end as printed. I hear a motion for approval of minutes released. One.
I want to approve all of the minutes as they get in.
So a motion by Renaud who had second.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor David. Any discussions, subtractions, additions, changes? Anybody see it? Not? All favor approval of minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? None of the minutes are approved. Communications.
The first one we have is the Treasurer's Monthly Report, which was a light gray sheet of paper. If it isn't on your desk, they were sent back on the table. And then notice on zoning committee, public hearing, which is June 18th, starts at 7:00 P.M. And then lastly are some appointments by our county board chair.
By county board chair, on his commissions, he's out of the body. I see as chair of county board supervisor Jefferson County, Wisconsin, as appointing authority hereby point mention Waymire for joint review board for TITs and TIF tips. And also as chair of county board supervisors at Jefferson County, Wisconsin, appointing authority hereby point Jay Blair Ward as alternate to joint review board for TITs, tips. I see as chair of Jefferson County Board Supervisor, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, as appointing authority hereby point Mark DeRees as an alternate to the joint review board of TITs and TIF's effective this day. Public hearing, so at this point we'll open the floor for public hearing on map amendment for the town of Volkman to Jefferson County Comprehensive Plan and Farmland Preservation Plan. Is there anybody here who would like to speak? We need a motion to open a public hearing. So moved by Supervisor David, seconded by Supervisor Jones. All favor?
Aye.
That anyone here would like to speak concerning this plan amendment for the town of Volkman, Jefferson County Comprehensive Plan, Farmland. I'm up to a mic there. Just identify yourself for for all that are watching on TV and the crowd here.
My name is Ted Brantney, I'm a town supervisor with the town of Volkman. We requested this after we determined that the town of Volkman had reached the criteria where we were able to look at creating some lots, a subdivision of more than five lots, back in 2018. We started looking at what was available in our urban service area, which is our growth area. We found that we have three parcels along Highway 18 owned by John Gideon. And he would be amenable to talking about development on them. As we looked at the county's map versus our smart growth map, we determined that one of those parcels was in our smart growth and was marked in the county's growth plan. The remaining two parcels were marked in preservation land and were not included in the county's plan. And after some discussions with planning and zoning, our town board back in January sends a resolution to the county asking for them to adjust their zoning map and include the two remaining parcels in the 15-year growth plan, which would bring it into line with the town's smart growth plan. At this point, there is no plan for development. This is the obvious, they enter into discussions and talk about whether this property could be the equivalent of being developed and if it needs the town going into the future.
Yeah, do you have any questions for open town supervisor?
How many acres are there, well? All total it's about 60. Some of it is right now R2, some of it is 80 acre progress, the rest is currently being used.
Any other questions? Any other questions? If you do look Supervisor Jones, this map is the end of your agenda that has been in our solo. Anyone else to speak? Anyone else to speak? Anyone else? There are none? I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Who made? Supervisor Schultz, and seconded by Supervisor Christensen to close the public hearing. Thank you. This is the item number nine. Let's vote to the act of the vote to close. All favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Close, your number public hearing is closed. A special order of business, 2019 audit presentation, Clinton Larson Allen. Put our screen up front here.
Hello, this is Jake Linnell, can you hear me okay?
No.
Can you talk a little louder Jake?
Yeah, let me try to get a little closer to the mic as well. Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Nice to see Terry is pulling up our presentation here. We went through this with the finance committee just this morning, actually. And so I just wanted to spend just a couple of minutes here kind of providing you some of the highlights from what we discussed this morning and also just open up to any questions that you may have. So very briefly, the agenda for tonight is really just to introduce or reintroduce you to CLA. It's been about five years since we've worked with Jefferson County. So just want to give you a little bit of background on the group that's working with you for the audit, as well as give you the results of 2019's financial statement audit. And then just talk a little bit about some of the things that we're working with your team on in terms of understanding what types of things they're managing as they go through the current environment. So on the next slide, a little background on CLA as a whole. CLA is, I'm not going to read all these different statistics here, but really what I want this group to understand is that we work heavily within the municipal market. We work with over half of the counties in Wisconsin. And the reason I want to share that with this group here is that as you're working through some of the different things that you have, the challenges that you have going forward and, you know, are looking for some of that sort of benchmark or best practice type information. We want you to know that we're available to you as a resource. We encourage that, we encourage that dialogue. We've had some really good discussions with your management team as well as your finance committee and your finance committee chair as well. You know, just talking through some of the things that you're experiencing as well as planning for the future. And as we become better service providers by receiving some of the information that you're sharing, we also want to share any info that we've learned from working with other communities as well. So just very briefly on your service team as it relates to the individuals on the audit. The next slide has some information about myself as well as my manager on the engagement, Jordan Bame. So both of us have been working in the governmental space our entire careers, working through audits similar to what we've done here with Jefferson County, but also with outsourced accounting services and consulting and budgeting. Various professional services that as you need them, be aware that we've got resources for you or really just to be as a sounding board as you're going through different things. Then real briefly, I just wanted to touch on the actual audit results as it relates to 2019's audit. And I won't go through in these things in as much detail as with the finance committee. Because really the message to take away from this is this was a very, very clean audit. You see that we have what's called an unmodified opinion within the financial statement audit. That's commonly referred to as a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we as your auditors can provide you that the financial statements prepared by your management team are appropriately stated and free of any material misstatement. So that's good, that's kind of that clean opinion as we discussed. The rest of the information included here within the slides gets into some of the more detailed topics that we talked at a more detailed level within the finance committee. And I thought I would just kind of highlight them more at a high level and just see if there's any questions then at the end as well. Recognizing that this is a little bit of a challenging environment here with the Zoom meeting to really see if there's any hands raised. So I will make sure to circle with this group if there is any questions at the end. I also don't quite have the same kind of skill set as some of your board members here because I wasn't able to change my background to a nice scenic view like Mary or Kirk. But all you see is my boring back office space, so. But we'll just kind of try to highlight a couple of these things here. As it relates to accounting policies and estimates, the one takeaway I would have for you here is that we do review all of the sort of sensitive matters in terms of determining estimates or utilizing judgment as it relates to those financial statement numbers. And as we work through the policies and estimates that your team has put into place, we had no recommended changes to the methodologies that they were doing as we looked at the assumptions that they were using and the history that backed up those assumptions. We agreed with the methodologies that they had in place. So on the next slide, I'll take you through just a little bit more information on those topics. Again, anytime you see the no's here, those are all good things because it's really saying that as we reviewed this information, we did not find things to report to you as it relates to changes or disagreements or anything like that. So the one area that I did want to highlight in particular here, and I spent some time with the finance committee on this as well, relates to the fact that you had no uncorrected misstatements and no corrected misstatements. So really what that means is we performed our audit work, we did not come across anything that we felt needed to be updated or changed in relation to the financial information that you had prepared, prepared for, your management team had prepared for the audit. So that's a strong signal to the financial integrity of the information that you are receiving throughout the year and the information that you're making decisions based on. That information is consistent with then what we see as an independent third party and review and validate as well. So that is a strong testament to the work that your management team there is doing on those financial pieces of information. The next section focuses again on other matters to report to you. Again, no disagreements with management, no consultations over anything with other accountants related to the work that we're doing. The bulk of the letter that's included within our financial statement disclosures, and this is actually on the next slide, is the management representation letter. And that is a letter that your management team provides saying that they accept responsibility for those financial statements and that they've provided us, your auditors, with everything that they're aware of that would be relevant to the audit process as well. And those financial statements are complete and accurate in their mind as well. So that really takes us through the deliverables that are a result of the financial statement audit. What I thought I would just spend a brief moment on here next is really more focused on the current environment. And you'll see that on the next slide. Actually, if you jump two slides, we can jump into some of the challenges obviously that you're seeing with COVID-19. I won't read through these individually, but you know, it is really widespread in terms of the financial implications as well as the operational issues that you as a county government in Wisconsin have been wrestling with. And you know, what I will say is as your first year auditors here, or I should say returning auditors. You know, we were moving through this audit process for the first time in five years with you again. And a lot has changed. And you know, we were able to achieve that through primarily a remote audit approach. And your staff was really able to pivot and embrace that very quickly and allow us to keep working through our work rather efficiently. So you know, that's just kind of one example of one of the many different ways in which these, the current environment has really required you to be nimble and flexible and quick and really pivot. And so, you know, I think round two of the challenges here is really focused on some of the grant funding that is available or will be available for the different types of costs that you've incurred related to that. And we've been in discussion with your management team on that as well, ensuring that they're in the loop and they're very proactive on identifying those dollars, being ready to apply when applicable and really tracking the costs that are going into this. So a lot of what you're seeing with the legislation is, you know, the activities occur and what you need to do needs to happen. And then the grant funding is kind of chasing it and then the grant rules are kind of chasing the funding. And so just being as diligent as you can in terms of tracking the costs and being prepared to provide support for the types of costs that you've incurred is very important. And your management team has recognized that very early, so you're very well prepared to respond to that. Also, we did talk at the finance committee level on the next page of just some of the new accounting standards that are coming up. You know, with COVID-19, a lot of the standards actually got delayed in terms of implementation. The reporting standards are kind of giving people a little bit more time to try to get things in order as they recognize that a lot of their day job is not spent on what their normal day activities have been. So there are some delays in how these accounting standards are applying. But again, your management team is very much upfront and ready to go and is evaluating the impact of these as they occur. And so with that, I thought I would just pause and see what kind of questions there may be. I know that was a pretty high level, but that was really by design in that a lot of the, as I said, a lot of the information that we received very consistent with what we were expecting to see for the county, very well supported. And so, you know, the kind of the old and boring and no news is good news kind of rapport with an audit is holding true here as well. So but if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Would there be questions for auditor? Any questions to the board for auditor? Anybody online? Thank you very much for presentation Jake.
All right, thank you.
For doing it twice today.
I'm getting good at this one. All right, thank you much.
Thank you. Move on to item 10, public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our committee reports, resolutions and ordinances. Board of Health, Kirk, your chair of board of health, you want to present this one? If you can't, I did discuss that with Supervisor Schultz, you can do it as well.
No, I can do it. So ordinance number 2020.
Three.
Three.
Powers and duties of county health officer previously known as the communicable disease ordinance. No executive summary to read, so I'm trusting that everyone has read this and will register their questions in the discussion. I move for passage as printed.
I have a second. Seconded by Supervisor Jones. Any discussion concerning this ordinance? Supervisor Pennard in his hand of. I saw Supervisor Pennard's hand first. And I believe I was Supervisor Brocklin, Supervisor Morrison, and Supervisor Davis. What are you doing? But my question is. Is it working now? Question is what are the changes to the previous ordinance? What's the driving force behind the revision, I guess?
Mr. Chair is open to handle that one. And then Gail Scott is also on here. So we did not have the authority of a local health officer on the books, I'll relate to that. And so there's been across the state, as we look at the Supreme Court ruling and analysis behind it, is looking at the legislative intent of the local body. And does it align then with the intent of what the statute states in there? And so what counties and communities are looking at right now is looking at development and the best practices working with their local upstairs, like in this case is the county board, to review the rules and regulations that are embodied within the statute as well. And does that should I move forward with the local health officer?
So this would allow the health officer to play stay at home for a period of time? And it's like there's a court of cure, a fine, 30 days in jail, what type of enforcement?
Those enforcement things are in there based on what the state statute currently says.
I believe was Supervisor Brocklin, next then Supervisor Morrison, Supervisor Davis.
Thank you for your time. This is the third time I've seen this and each time I've had questions and concerns and each time they have been great at answering and updating the document. It has been improved vastly, but I still have concerns about this particular document. And that was confirmed this afternoon when one of our elected officials on the state level called and asked me questions about it. So Ben and I have had numerous conversations about this, trying to get this all settled out. So I called Kyle Christensen at the Wisconsin Counties Association this afternoon and we talked for a little while. They are in the process of putting a group together of health officials, WCA officials, elected officials, the different corporation councils, as well as the towns and municipalities, organizations as well, to come up with either a template or. They feel that are very important. I know some of the other counties around the state have taken this up. I do know that it's gone both directions. Just a little less than an hour ago, Walworth County voted it down 10 to 1. But I do, Marinette County has delayed it as well. I know that Door County has passed it and there's some others. And because of all those questions and concerns, I'm making a motion that we postpone this ordinance to the next meeting till we hear from the Wisconsin Counties Association and a little more data on this.
We have a motion to postpone in a second. From the floor, I would like to know if those people made a motion with mine, if the other people asked the questions first before it was taken on.
We have a discussion on motion to postpone.
So we have a motion to postpone. Any discussion on that? Supervisor Morris.
Thank you. By the way, did everybody see Supervisor Mast kept the speaker there? I should let the record show that that was pretty swift. Yeah, you got it. Sure, everybody knows that. I like this ordinance and I like Gail Scott. And if Gail Scott were going to be the public health officer for the next thousand years, I'd say, let's go for it. Because I think we would all say, we would all say we were very blessed to have her during this time. And but we all know that we won't have Gail Scott. And that's today. There are several things about this ordinance that I like. I like that it's defined communicable disease. It's really what it's talking about is what happens when there's a communicable disease. Doesn't really go beyond communicable diseases. And it does try and specify the difference between an outbreak, an epidemic and a pandemic. Now, one of the challenges about that is will an outbreak determined by who? An epidemic determined by who? And a pandemic determined by who? Well, the World Health Organization does do pandemics, I guess. So it, she's supposed to investigate. It doesn't clarify that she's the one that determines the outbreak or whoever the public health officer is. All right? So I think that's something that needs to be clarified a little better here. Needs to be better clarified. A pandemic isn't going to be investigated and determined by the Jefferson County Public Health Officer. I'm not even sure that the public health officer in a county can identify something as an epidemic. So I think that's a concern as well. I'm not, I'm not sure that that's possible, I'd like to be sure. The other thing is, Supervisor Pennard mentioned 30 days. Well, the only 30 days here is a punishment along with a $500 fine. I guess I would like to see that the communicable disease ordinance maybe matches something like we do with the emergency declaration on the next page. The emergency declaration is something that we are being asked to reaffirm or reinforce over and over. Part of what happened in the Supreme Court was the debate over what's the window of opportunity? And there's no window of opportunity here. And so I guess my question is, should there be? Should there be? And I would think that's at least something that should be debated. But I'm not sure, we are the body to debate that. I'm not saying we don't have intelligent people here. But to me, that is a debate that probably should happen somewhere other than us, so maybe the Wisconsin counties program or maybe on a state level. But I do think it should be tied in some ways so that there's a window. So you know, communicable diseases might go on and on and on, they might not. There needs to be a way to say that it's over with. So like I say, Gail Scott has done a fabulous job and I like that we want to do this. But I would say I don't think we are the ones to do this now. I would like to see what the counties offer as a template. I think that's fair. I think that's fair. I do agree that we need some sort of ordinance and I like the fact that we're updating it. I'm not against that at all. But when it came out, I read it and I thought of these concerns. And for that reason, I'm going to vote in favor of postponing.
We have a discussion on the postponement. Supervisor David.
Thank you. I have concerns about this ordinance also and couldn't support it in its current form and believe there is a lot of ambiguity about it, an incredibly complex subject, which I also have misgivings about. So I won't, I would support this resolution to send it back to committee to work on it further because I won't support it. further, because I won't support it as is. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes. We have a motion to postpone on the floor. And a second? So, we all in here to postpone? Say aye.
Aye.
Oh?
No.
Aye. I think we'll need a roll call.
Supervisor Jones.
Aye.
Supervisor Kelly. Supervisor David.
David.
Wait, wait, wait. We're voting to postpone.
Voting to postpone, that's right. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes.
Supervisor Brockler.
Yes.
Supervisor Hurst. Supervisor Morris.
Yes.
Supervisor Wannepie.
No.
Supervisor Bernard.
No.
Supervisor Dastrow.
Yes.
Supervisor Johns.
Yes.
Supervisor Smith.
Yes.
Supervisor Martin. Supervisor Wong.
No.
Supervisor Mast.
No.
Supervisor Payne.
No.
Was that a no?
No.
Thank you. Supervisor Coop.
Yes.
Supervisor White.
Yes.
Supervisor Drayna. Supervisor Backland.
Yes.
Supervisor Pennard.
Yes.
Supervisor Paulson.
Yes.
Supervisor Jacob.
Yes.
Supervisor Wendell.
Yes.
Supervisor Felker.
Yes.
Supervisor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Supervisor Nealon.
Yes.
Supervisor Schultz.
No.
Supervisor Roberts.
No.
Supervisor Christensen.
No.
Mike Kelly's back now.
Supervisor Kelly? Mike, you're muted.
Supervisor Kelly, you're muted. Supervisor Kelly? Muted. Are you ready to vote? Here. We don't message any quick. All technology. Anybody want to stand up and sing a song? Come on. All right, just one more. What is our vote tally?
The vote tally has come out 20 yes, 7 no, 2, I guess, and 3 absence.
The motion passes to postpone. The ordinance number three. To our next executive committee. Supervisor Pennard.
Resolution number 2028. Extension of emergency declaration. On March 13th, 2020, in response to an emerging concern of a public health emergency, then county board chair Jim Schrader issued an emergencies declaration. This order has been subsequently ratified and continued as written by the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors on March 19th, April 21, and May 12, 2020. The public health emergency was also impacted by the orderly transfer of one term of the board of supervisors to a new term of the board of supervisors, which included the need to elect new officers to the board through the required organizational meeting on April 21, 2020. Subsequent to this meeting, appointments of committee assignments, and subsequent need to elect leaders of these committees, boards, and commissions were required. As such, the county administrator has been delegated additional authorities under the declaration to maintain the continuity of operations and ensure the protection of the publics. The county administrator has reported the actions taken during this declaration to committees to include ratification of said action. Since the emergency has been declared, the county has developed several systems to respond to the COVID-19 status, along with the process to begin recovery operations externally and internally. These systems have allowed the operations to normalize, and processes are in place to deal with emerging issues. These systems will continue to be enhanced as we work through potential additional dollars the county may receive from the state and federal government as the situation requires. Further, most of the newly formed committees and boards have met or are expected to meet soon, which will facilitate in their role for policymaking and guidance. Pending board approval, it is also the intent that the remote attendance policy will be maintained for an indeterminate time, even beyond the declaration. Based on the above conditions, it is being recommended by the executive committee and the county administrator that the county should begin the process to phase down the emergency declaration. With the proposed extension of the declaration before the board this evening, the first phase will remove the authority relegated to extraordinary spending authority and reduce this to normal operational needs. This will not limit the county administrator's authority to further control budget oversight beyond normal operations, nor will it affect the county administrator's authority to make emergency procurements under the county's current purchasing ordinance. The executive committee will continue to review information at future meetings and will consider further reduction of powers for the July board meeting to include potentially ending the declaration. This will include monitoring the requirements of the declaration for funding reimbursement from the state and federal governments. I move approval of this resolution.
One second. Second, Supervisor Pennard. Discussion on this resolution. Next, what happened?
It wasn't exactly clear in the executive summary, but the extension that we are voting on tonight would extend the declaration to our next board meeting, July 14.
Are we clear? Discussion. Any discussion? Supervisor Davis.
I was going to type up this, this is very complicated. I just opened the paperwork so I could... Can you hear me now? Thank you. I appreciate that. Testing, testing.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Actually, this is, thank you, I appreciate that. I wouldn't be supporting this ordinance tonight. I supported it last month with some misgivings, and I think there's just too many ambiguities about what is happening in our world, too many odd coincidences, too many conflicts of interest in organizations that are leading lockdowns and quarantines and public policy right now. There's a lot of consequences to whatever we do, and I'd like to talk about that a little bit. There's a lot of assumptions that this is being based on that I don't necessarily agree with, and this is just an incredibly complex issue. So, I was going to type up some notes for everybody today, but someone once said, "Smart person, make hay while the sun shines," and that's what we did today, make hay instead of this, and we got our hay in just before it started to rain. So, I have a lot of reasons why I'm not going to support this, and please bear with me, having said a lot at the county boards in the past, but this one really bears on my soul, so I need to bring that forward. This whole lockdown and pandemic was based on an empirical model from Great Britain, and it said we were going to have 2 million deaths in the U.S., and it said Great Britain was going to have 500,000 deaths. And as of a couple weeks ago, that number was 2,400% off. Granted, deaths have gone up, but it is nowhere near the estimated amount that the lockdowns were initiated based upon. And then, as the numbers started to come in, they weren't particularly reliable, depending upon where they came from. The testing was all screwed up. The CDC said, "We're the only ones that can do tests, and by the way, our tests are screwed up, and we may have some for a month." You know, that really kind of struck me wrong. Also, the CDC, one of the major organizations that are kind of implemented in or implicated in this, should have closed the country down back when I first heard about this. We knew about the virus back in December. I knew about it in December. I knew a lot about it in January. That's when I bought my masks. That's when I was concerned. I brought it up to the county board on the law enforcement committee. You probably remember that. I said, "This could be something special." And nobody paid any attention to it, and planes were flying all over the world, and it took a whole month before we decided that we weren't going to allow such travel. And during that time, the virus traveled the world. When we discovered that the figures didn't actually meet the empirical model, the imperial model, which by the way, we could not confirm that Neil Ferguson and his group did not release the math and the numbers behind that model for about a month and a half. So, we continued on this trajectory with no scientists in the world being able to confirm or not confirming. Then, when the numbers started to come in, our response was to double down with the lockdowns and the quarantines. Another reason I'm against this is the lockdowns failed. The latest evidence coming out of New York is 66% of the people that are showing up at the hospitals were in quarantine. They were in their house. They weren't the ones traveling all over. Let's see. We have countries that didn't lock down, countries like Sweden and three other ones, I forget what they are. Their numbers aren't completely off the scale. They're similar to, there's three tiers of deaths and disease, and they're kind of in the top tier of the middle group. It's not outrageous, it's falling within parameters. They did nothing. What's interesting about that is, we initially had the lockdown. Anybody remember the reason for it? It was to lower the curve, right? Flatten the curve. And why was that? That was to give our hospitals the capacity to meet the onrush of people coming in. Well, the onrush really never happened. Hospitals basically shut down their operations. I have family members that weren't able to be treated for serious diseases because we couldn't get to the hospital. People are dying of other diseases because the hospitals are kind of closed down, or they're afraid to go to them. So, if we lock down, and if we stay locked down like this, what's funny to happen is, come fall time, when the disease actually begins to spike because it seems to be a cool-weather disease, we're going to probably face another round of spike in disease and spike in deaths. Meanwhile, places that didn't lock down, like Sweden, they are going to be achieved what is known as herd immunity. And there are a couple ways to think about this. You can think about this as germ war, warfare, where you get the disease and you need to either be treated or die. Or you can develop herd immunity. You can catch the cold, you can develop your own herd immunity, and you're going to be fine just the next time it comes around, or that's what the research and information that I have been looking at says. When we did the lockdown, that was the wrong way to proceed. We shouldn't be locking down everybody. We shouldn't be telling people, "Stay home, stay, stay, you know, wear your things, don't come within contact." We should be trying to develop herd immunity. The people we should have locked down are the people that actually are dying from the disease, basically old men. 80% of the people dying are over the age of 60. What's that? Sorry. I'm 66. I'm in that category too. Those are the people we should have protected. Those are the people we should have actually taken care of, that we should have quarantined. That's how diseases were usually caused. This is, this is completely out of the ordinary. This is one of the ambiguities, the strange things that are happening because of this. You know, in New York City, they have some of the worst rates of death anywhere, but they are also, and the American, the whole American medical system missed the vote on this particular thing. They treated for a respiratory disease. We knew back in 2005, when the first SARS coronavirus came around, that it wasn't really a respiratory disease, that it was a blood disease, that it did not allow our blood to take up the oxygen. And so, because we're treating this for a respiratory disease, we put people on intubation. What that means is they give you drugs, drug you into a coma, put a tube down your airway, and pump air into you. And that actually, 90, at least 90% of the people that had intubation died. It was the wrong treatment. We were treating for a respiratory disease. We should have been treating for a blood disease. We aggravated that by mandating in New York City that the old people with the virus had to be accepted into old folks' homes. The most vulnerable places of anybody, and we put six people in there, it was like just the wrong thing to do. Meanwhile, the, either the mayor or the governor banned hydroxychloroquine, which all over the world is showing amazing results, except in the U.S. And that's kind of troubling to me. Social distancing, masks, there's, masks are thought to be effective, they're not. Microscopic particles aren't stopped by those masks. They do actually, there are, there is legitimate scientific studies demonstrating that it inhibits oxygen, and for people that are oxygen compromised, perhaps because they have a virus that inhibits the oxygen uptake in their blood, this can actually be very bad for them. And anyhow, if we were going to institute the use of masks and social distancing, it should have been before the virus got here, back in early December and into January, but we didn't start doing that. The CDC said, "Up to February, that we don't need masks." It's important. And only two more pages, and I'll start to skip stuff. We blocked effective treatment. Over 200 studies around the world say hydroxychloroquine works, and there's all sorts of numbers out there demonstrating this, and yet, we're not using it. And there's all sorts of numbers out there demonstrating this, and yet, we're not using it. There are other things that work really well against this. Like I say, hydroxychloroquine, but also vitamin C, vitamin D, zinc supplements. The CDC, our health institutes, aren't promoting that type of thing. And I think that's because of a capitalistic determination of the protocol used to treat this disease. It's not really about saving lives. Unfortunately, it seems to be more about making money. The doctors and the medical institutions screwed up. We should have learned our lesson from SARS in 2005, that a one-size-fits-all protocol simply does not work for this. You know, somewhere along the line, also, we went from, "We're going to lock down, and so we can flatten the curve." Now, all of a sudden, we're locked down until we find the vaccine. I find that very troubling. Vaccines are plagued with issues. They have their own consequences. They have their own mortalities associated with them. We're skipping the trials. While we talk about vaccines for a couple of minutes, recognize that the institute that regulates those, that in 1986, Congress passed a bill, no, 1986, Congress passed the vaccine bill, which exempted all liability from manufacturers of vaccines. And at the same time, the people manufacturing the vaccines, we're able to institute within our government mandatory vaccines for children. It's a very profitable business. You don't have liability, and you don't have advertising costs. I have a huge problem with that. When you look at world numbers, you're going to find that the U.S. is winning as far as how many people have died. We have supposedly 219,000 deaths, according to Worldometer's info. As of today, world deaths, well, U.S. deaths, I can't find it. Somewhere around 219,000 people. But we are counting people that are, we know we filled with intubation when we treated the disease wrong. We should have been putting them in hyperbaric oxygen chambers. There's all sorts of protocols we could have done that we didn't. Quarantine. The deaths, how and what is counted, especially in the U.S., is inaccurate. Hospitals and medical organizations are incentivized very well financially for stamping something, a COVID death, as opposed to something of a coma morbidity, where the person probably would have died anyhow. Regulation also its own condition. I think I did it to the end. I think in this country, we have authoritarian bias. Someone in a position of authority says, "This is what it is." And everybody says, "Okay." And I always question assumptions. And so, I don't think that the people in charge of making these decisions do not have, they have conflicts of interest, and they're making bad decisions. If you wanted to talk about conspiracy theory, this COVID outbreak is an absolute perfect cover for a crashing economy. Lock everybody up, put them away. Huge opportunity for wealth transfer. How many, you know, when the economy tanked in March, what happened? The Fed jumped in and dumped $2 trillion into the banks and commodity markets. I personally feel this is an impingement on my rights. If you're afraid of the virus, stay home, wear your masks, stay in the basement. But it should not affect how I operate my life. There's a rotten smell about this whole thing. And I'm not going to be supporting things that support the lockdown and the seriousness of this virus, because although people are dying, it's nowhere near as big as it has been made out to be. And therefore, I won't be supporting this ordinance. Thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate it very much. Amy Renard, and then Supervisor Roberts. And I feel a whole lot better getting that out of my chest. Thank you.
With all due respect to my colleague Supervisor David, this resolution has nothing to do with lockdowns or forcing people to advance. It has to do with running county government. That's what it does. It gives our county administrator special powers to deal with expenditures, personnel actions, policies, if and when committees are not around, are able to. That's all it does. It doesn't enforce lockdowns. It doesn't declare anybody can't go someplace. The state of Wisconsin is not under lockdown, and neither is Jefferson County. Our health department has issued guidelines for social distancing, wearing of masks, et cetera. But that's it. This is about keeping county government operating. It's also about maintaining possible eligibility for reimbursement of our expenses related to COVID-19 in the event federal and state dollars remain available. That's what it does. And we could argue about the curve, and who's to blame, and chloroquine, you know, for hours. But that's not what this is about. Just isn't.
Supervisor Roberts. Supervisor Roberts.
Yes, I am in favor of this. Because, number one, if you've noticed that since the state Supreme Court said that our governor did not have the right to extend the stay-at-home, we have gone up from like 40 to over 130. People just forgot all about it. So I still think we have to be concerned about our residents, the people of our communities and our county. And by the way, the Sweden minister, I saw a video where he said he made a big mistake. So I think that that was a little misleading. I understand where you're coming from, but I still feel that it's important that the county has the right and the right behind them to make a decision about something like this. And I'm over 70, so I'm fine. But there are children, and there are people a lot younger than me that are getting COVID-19. And I know a person personally that had it, and luckily, he lived, a young man. But I think we still have to protect our people. Thank you.
Supervisor Robinson. Supervisor Robinson first, and Supervisor Shulz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to state my agreement with the positions that Supervisor Renard stated. And in addition, I sat in a Zoom meeting for the finance committee this morning. And in that meeting, it was stated that we've already tallied around $500,000 in costs related to the pandemic issue. And if this declaration, if this declaration has some effect on recovering some of those costs, I think we should support her ability to do that by passing this declaration. Thank you.
Supervisor Shulz.
You'll have to excuse me. I'm over 70 years old, so. I have a personal thing here. It's my claim that everything isn't what it's said. I have three friends who have COVID-19. And it's a reality. It's real. There's an attempt out there by people to make it sound like it's not as real, idiots. It's important to see where I live. I always mention hydroxychloroquine. I just yesterday read an article that says that that's being promoted for profit. And it does not have any effect on COVID-19. So I don't know. I'm not of your argument, it does. This is all fairly new for us within the last few months. There's nobody in this room that has all the answers. And the problem with the debate is, it is engaged, both sides are engaged in what I call Facebook facts. And you know how accurate those are. Both sides are throwing those in. The important thing I would like everybody to look at in this resolution is the line that says, "Now, therefore, be it resolved, the county board extends the emergency declaration issued by county board chair Jim Schrader in March 13, 2020, which presently in effect, the full power in effect determine that it will continue until July 14, 2020." One more month. So we're going to throw the baby out with the bathwater for one month? Hopefully, we have more real answers than a month. But assuming we have all the answers now, it's not the right way to go.
Supervisor Smith, let his hand up first. Supervisor Renard.
Well, Supervisor David and I could agree that it's complicated. I looked up what was actually said originally, and I think it was 2.2 million people would die. But that would be unlikely, because it would require government to do nothing and the public to do nothing, which, we're wearing masks, we're social distancing, we had the lockdown. So to say that somehow that that number is an error, you know, we won't know how true it was. And to do something like herd immunity, we got 330 million people. If we went to 60%, that's 200 million. Assuming 20% of them are, they're about to end up in the hospital, you're talking about 40 million people. And maybe we'll end up with 800,000 people dead, or who knows what it would be. And to talk about Sweden, they've been in the paper saying they would think their policy different when you compare them to Norway and Denmark. I'm not sure which one was which, but one had, they had 10 times the death rate of one of the countries, and 4.5 times the death rate of another country. So to think that we should just have this spread through our community and live with it, you know, I'm certainly not in favor of that. So I think it is complicated, and the more we can do to protect each other, the better off we're going to be.
Supervisor Renard.
Well, I kind of think we got off the track. To me, this is just about one month of emergency declaration. The question I had was, in the executive summary, it talks about phase one of going back to normal. Is that anywhere in this resolution here to continue? I guess it's in there, but I didn't see it anywhere where we were talking anywhere else. It's about whereas or whatever says that we're going to take phase one and institute that.
So this copy that you have in front of you does not include the cross-off wording. So the previous declarations, they're wording basically for the effect of the county administration authorizing use fund balance in contingency funds with some level oversight by the finance committee. Those were the extraordinary matters that we had pulled back in the financial policies. But those are very broad. Tennessee's three hefty, fund balances much more heftier. And in my opinion, part of the reason I wanted to start going back is because I thought we're in a position that needs to start going back through reelected officials. So that wording was not shown here as being crossed off, but that was a main part of this initial phase, starting to pull some of those powers back through the committees.
Any other questions or discussions? Supervisor Jacob.
Yes, I was happy to find there was one, I voted for her, but I didn't want to discuss this. But I have a couple of, I want to say questions and comments. First comment was for previous one, health department. You know, I was going against it, but last post-holmes happened, and yet, my comments were pretty much laying off my, Mr. Supervisor Rodger, and a lot more add to it by Mr. David. The question that I don't think I got out of there this morning, I don't know if I asked it, through that meeting. By continuing this resolution, doesn't guarantee us any more security of actually receiving funds if the state gives us, or gives more funds? That's where I have my reservations on continuing that, because we've already implemented the emergency plan. And by discontinuing this, making somebody feel good, doesn't guarantee us that, because I know you said there was a lot of goal, or a lot of, they keep moving the goal of what they're going to pay for or not. Gives me great reservations to vote for this, if it goes not to a certain kind of guarantee that we're going to recruit the funds that we're spending to do this. I mean, we spent a pretty good chunk already, as you guys showed us this morning in the finance committee. I think the fortune $500,000, some thousand dollars that, you know, are COVID-related. And in that, yes, I guess that's where I can't quite support this as it stands right now. Thank you.
So to clarify that, I cannot guarantee today either direction, if we have the declaration in place, what that means to reimbursement, and that's going to be required. We are giving different guidance on what that might look like as we look for reimbursement. U.S. Treasury is continuing to change or update their guidance to the state, and the state is trying to react to the dollars that be allocated. So as part of the CARE Act, the state of Wisconsin received about $2 billion, give or take a little bit. The governor announced about two weeks ago now that local governments will receive approximately $200 million. Of that, $10 million is going to Native American tribes. And each town, village, city, and county will get minimum $5,000. But in essence, they're distributed by per-ride share. Our per-ride share is about $1.375 million. The guidelines for utilization of those dollars are very restrictive right now from what we've been told. There's still a lot more going back and forth. So back to Supervisor Jacob's point, right now, we're working through rules that are still being written. On Monday, WCA hosted a conference call with the county executives and ministers that we do every Monday. On that call, we're members from DOA and the governor's office, NICA pilots, but they will not give us anything in writing yet. So that kind of tells us where we're at. So I can't say here today for a U.S. body to say, "We need to have this." I also can't say if we don't have it, what the impacts might be. But allocation we have, for the most part, is guaranteed to us as long as we follow the parameters of those requirements. But there's other funds that are out there, such as FEMA, that we're working through as well. So I know that's not 100% accuracy, but I'm not going to, I can't tell you the way to do it.
Renard. Supervisor Renard.
All right, I'm going to be very brief, because we've been talking about this a whole lot longer than I thought would be possible. And also because my colleague Amy Renard said almost everything that needed to be said right off the bat. The reason we should support this is simple. Because we're elected, each of us, elected to be prudent and cautious and do things with some foresight. And that's what we're trying to do here. This resolution is different than the ones we passed before. And the reason was because we're trying to base a lot of us to take away some of the authority that we granted our county administrator, which was a his- our county administrator, which was a his suggestion. And to show the public that, yes, we've been cautious, but now is the time to move out of this. And instead, we're talking about hydroxyl fluoride. That's how it ends.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Supervisor Jacob.
I made a few notes, but I don't know. I don't think I'm going to talk about those really. I just had a couple other comments to mention. You know, we've become cogs in a wheel. And if the wheels go in the wrong direction, maybe the cog needs to stop and think about what it's doing. I just can't support this. I think the whole COVID-19 is a sham. I really, it's there, it's a disease, but it's completely blown out of proportion. I'd love to sit down with people that are disagreeing with me and investigate. You bring your information, I bring my information. We sit there and we look at it like adults and try to figure out where the truth is and where the fiction is. I don't believe that our society and our community has the resilience to do what the lockdown has done and what social distancing is doing. Look at all the consequences that are happening. Look at what the banking catastrophe that happened. How many jobs have been lost? How are people going to recover from that? The sooner we can end this thing, the sooner we can say that, yeah, it's a bad fruit, it's maybe twice as bad as 2017, but it's not what they were predicting. The sooner we walk away from that and say that that is untrue, the better. One of the things that really disturbs me is how this is aligned itself on political lines. I mean, you can almost tell who votes in the Democratic and who votes in a Republican as a Republican just by the arguments and what we're going to see happen in a couple minutes. I find that really disturbing that this pandemic has become a partisan issue so terribly. So and then that really strange thing about that, I'm on the wrong side all of a sudden. And that's different than it's ever happened before, really. So I don't know, it's just such a complex conundrum we are against. But I can no longer support that because I, in my heart, feel that it's a farce. Quicker we walk away from it, the better off our society and country is going to be.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Supervisor Jacob.
Speaking about the virus, I'm one of the guys who's very susceptible. I'm in my 84th year. When this thing started, I have five nurses in my family, between my daughters, daughters-in-law, and grandmas. So you understand the pressure I was under, which was good. They wouldn't allow me to leave the house. They brought my groceries, they ran errands, and my wife wouldn't leave the house for two months. I believe what the experts are saying. I listen to Dr. Fauci and Dr. Burke, and I feel they know what's happening and they know what's best for us. And forget what the politicians say because personally, they don't know anything about diseases to start with. They're only looking for the financial welfare of the country. And it's time we start dealing with the needs of the people at the bottom and not that one or two percent at the top that are getting billions of dollars for free. So I will support this. And I feel we should continue to do what we're doing with our masks in there, keeping space between us. I hadn't gotten a haircut for three months. And I began to look like a belly goring. So finally, I called my driver. And I said, are you going to be wearing a mask when I come in? Well, I sterilize my equipment between customers, but I don't wear a mask. But I said, I guess I won't be coming in. And he paused for a moment, he said, I will wear a mask for you. So when I got there, he had this big black mask on. Prior to this, a few months ago, he was telling me about all the customers that he was losing because most of his customers are elderly people. We get our haircuts, yeah. Young people go to wear a dress, they have them styled, or they shave their heads. So the old barbers are running out of customers. And so he realized that, hey, if I get this, they're going to die. So I'll be part of the picture too. And I might still be, I don't know. But I will support this. I went through all the diseases as a kid. Measles, chicken pox, and mumps. At the measles place, he had a red sticker put on our front door at that time that the contagious house did not enter. The healthy barbers came out through Jefferson County and did this. And I survived, fortunately. Some didn't. But anyway, I just wanted you to hear from somebody in the dangerous area.
Anyone else? Supervisor.
I'm fortunate in the fact that I have my oldest daughter as a doctor at Marshfield Clinic. My second daughter is a nurse at the VA in Milwaukee. And I can tell you, both of them, they talked to me, said, be careful about COVID. So they know, they've seen it. They've seen people, especially at the VA in Milwaukee. My daughter in Milwaukee has seen veterans die from this. So it's real. And my daughter in Marshfield has seen young kids. She's a pediatrician, she has seen young kids that have had this. So it's a real thing, it's not something fake. It's there. And if we get it, you're going to know about it. So I'm going to go with the experts on this one.
Anyone else? Anyone else? So we have a motion on the floor. So we have a motion on the floor to pass our emergency declaration for one more month with a few pieces withdrawn concerning the financials that will go back to the Finance Committee as we have always done. And so, you have a question?
No, I mean, you say you want the motion.
The motion has already been done, wait a second. So at this point, all in favor of the emergency declarations, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? I guess I have to have a no vote.
Supervisor.
Supervisor Green has had a vote right now.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Jones?
Aye.
Supervisor Kelly?
Aye.
Supervisor David?
No.
Supervisor T? Oh, yeah. Deborah? Supervisor Hertz?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris? Supervisor Wineke?
Aye.
Supervisor Renard?
Aye.
Supervisor Zachar?
Aye.
Supervisor Johns?
Aye.
Supervisor Snell?
Aye.
Supervisor Martin?
Aye.
Supervisor Lund?
Aye.
Supervisor Mass?
Aye.
Supervisor Payne?
Aye.
Supervisor Coop?
Aye.
Supervisor White?
Aye.
Supervisor Draino? Supervisor Backman?
Aye.
Supervisor Canard? Supervisor Paulson? Sorry? Supervisor Jacob? Supervisor Lindell? Supervisor Felker?
No.
Supervisor Fitzgerald? Supervisor Newman? Supervisor Schultz? Supervisor Roberts?
Aye.
And Supervisor Christensen?
Aye.
I believe the ayes have it. So we made a exact tone of the next coming vote needed as modified. Supervisor Benard.
Resolution number 2020. Authorization for remote attendance. Whereas in an emergency, namely the COVID-19 epidemic has impacted and will continue to impact Jefferson County. And whereas then county board chair Jim Schrader issued an emergency declaration on March 13, 2020, which has subsequently been ratified and continued by the Jefferson County Board on March 19, April 21, May 12, and June 9, 2020. And whereas it is imperative that the governing bodies of the county have the ability to meet as required to maintain the operations of the county. And whereas the county administrator and staff have developed a process, procedure, and capabilities to facilitate remote attendance at county meetings in compliance with all applicable laws and allows for participation of board members, public, and staff by in-person and through remote practices. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Jefferson County Board authorizes the utilization of remote attendance at all county meetings, help to facilitate the transaction of county business with minimal barriers to participation of members of boards, commissions, committees, and facilitate ability for public transparency. This broadly construed policy shall be in place until rescinded by the county board or is superseded by an updated remote attendance policy. Fiscal note, the remote technology used capitalizes on hardware and infrastructure the county has in place pre-COVID-19. The Zoom software system utilized was purchased as a, on a countywide basis to facilitate meetings and ongoing operation. Total cost was $1,999 for a one-year subscription with 10 host accounts and allows for up to 300 participants per meeting. This may be an eligible cost that may be reimbursed back to the county. I vote approval of this resolution.
Second was by Supervisor Smith or Supervisor Christensen? Supervisor Christensen was the second. Any discussion? Any discussion of this resolution? Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One down. Resolution passed. Finance committee. Supervisor John.
Resolution number 2028. Acceptance of Earth with Three Program Innovation and Social Development Emotional Development Grant Funding through the State of Wisconsin Department of Health Services to Human Service Department, executive summary. Jefferson County Human Services was recently awarded a grant from the State of Wisconsin Department of Health Services upon project that supports implementation of evidence-based practices and system changes to improve social, emotional outcomes for enrolled children. The county received a grant in amount of $54,005.50 to fund implementation of the Jefferson Touchpoints Training. This training will be provided to Jefferson County, Dodge County, and contracted staff. A Jefferson County staff member will also become a certified trainer and provide training for community partners. On June 9, 2020, the Finance Committee reviewed the request with the Human Service Director and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board to accept the grant funding of $54,005.50 and create a budget amendment. Fiscal note, the Earth with Three Program Innovation and Social Emotional Development Grant is run until December 31, 2021. Jefferson County receive reimbursement for costs incurred in the 2020 and the 2021. Please see the attached budget adjustment or Evan Request Form for proposed adjustment to the 2020 budget. This is a budget amendment. County Board approval requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the county board, 20 votes of the 30-member county board. Grant funds not extended during 2020 will be incorporated into the Human Services 2021 budget. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
With the second from Supervisor Broderick. Any discussion? Any discussion? Supervisor Smith.
Is there a downside to this?
No.
No.
No. Anywhere in Finance Committee that is?
All right, go ahead.
It's all set. Any other questions? Any questions, discussion? All in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Jones.
Resolution number 2029. Disallow claim of Lincoln Peazer. The claim is a paid against Jefferson County for damages. The claim has been due by the county insurance carrier, Wemming, and was recommended for disallowance based on the findings that the county has no liability for this claim and is not legally responsible for less damages. This resolution formally denies the claim filed against the Jefferson County and directs the Corporation Council to give the claimant notice of disallowance. The Finance Committee met up May 14, 2020 and recommended forwarding this resolution to the county board for approval. Fiscal note, this matter has been referred to Wisconsin Municipal Financial Insurance Company, Wemming, and will result in accordance with the terms of the county policy. Mr. Chair, I move for passage of this resolution.
Motion was made, so a second. Second by Supervisor Jones. Any discussion? Any discussion? See none, all in favor of Resolution 2029? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Make passage. Supervisor Jacob.
The Florida State of North Carolina Board of Supervisors Supervisor. Jefferson County planning to launch a treaty and have considered petition to have the official going map at our public hearing on April 23rd and on May 27th, 23rd or 24th, required of our front of the county's six steps. This order is being duly advised of the wishes of the county board and persons in the areas of traffic. Everybody makes this policy recommendation. The motions as listed, page 26A of May 2020, Lane Paul's Secretary. That's the time to report this. Number 2024. I mean, official going map. Here's the report that the official going map of Jefferson County where provisions as listed were referred to Jefferson County Committee for public hearing on April 23rd and other provisions as listed were public hearing on May 21st. Whereas the post amendments have been given due consideration by the Board of Supervisors in open session. Therefore, we are in that Jefferson County Board Supervisor does not have the official going map of Jefferson County as follows. I move for adoption of this order.
Accepted by Mr. Paulson. Mr. Canard?
I need to have a change of the President's Council.
The record shows that Supervisor Canard is of his name. Any discussion? Any discussion, questions, discussion? All in favor of this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See none, the ordinance passed. Supervisor.
Resolution 2020. Resolution letting Jefferson County Conference have a cultural preservation plan. Use the cultural preservation plan approved on 2026, 2020 by the Plank Door Committee. I don't agree at all because it's pretty self-explanatory and our, um, we're not so comfortable with open pan. from the county, the whole kind of team, and we explained a little bit about it in the public comment. I move for passing of this resolution.
Seconded from Supervisor Paulson. Any further discussion, questions? Is he not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes.
Number 25. Ordinance adopting a map amendment to Jefferson County comprehensive plan and major cultural preservation land use plan. Our next reservation. Where the council opened a request to the county to adopt a comprehensive plan of major cultural preservation and land use plan. And whereas the Jefferson, whereas the planning and zoning committee adopted a public participation plan on March 10, 2020, to guide the process of amendment of plans, whereas the map amendment was all fine, more definitely, resolution 2020.
Question. Question.
Whereas duly noticed public hearing for Friday, going, may, or July 21st, 2020, public hearing of the county board to tell them, June 10.
Next.
9th, this is the ordinance here. And whereas, I am going to recommend the adoption of the map amendment to the comprehensive plan, major cultural preservation plan use, land use plan on May 26, 2020. Now, therefore, here, in order that pursuant to Wisconsin statute 66, $1,001,1 and chapter 91 of Jefferson County comprehensive plan, and Jefferson County major cultural preservation and land use plan, the amendment would change, fifth numbers as listed, from farmland preservation to 15-year growth area, here by adopted. There's no fiscal note, there's no fiscal intent. Move for adoption of this order.
Seconded by, by Supervisor Paulson. Any further discussion, questions? Is he not all in favor of this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Now we have appointments by county administrator.
On virtue of authority vested, section 59.18, here in two paragraphs, here being of the Wisconsin statutes, to respectfully reflect confirmation of following appointment, Ms. Patricia Cicero is the Land and Water Conservation Director for an interim midterm. For those who don't know, Patricia has been serving the role as interim director for almost the past year, as we look at structure, et cetera. She's done outstanding job of moving us forward. We've got a lot of great conversation that we look to the future. So I wholeheartedly support this moving forward and taking on this role on a permanent basis on a permanent basis.
Move to confirm, second.
Move to confirm by Supervisor Brogler, the second was by Supervisor Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You are confirmed, thank you, Patricia.
Point for county board chair, by virtue of authority vested, under section 59.548, I hear by request confirmation of following appointment. Gethsemane Mar, Fort Ectis, Wisconsin, to the Storage Site Preservation Council for return ending April 19, 2022. Do I have a motion?
By Supervisor Schultz, the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Appointments by the Human Service Board.
By virtue of authority vested, Human Services Board, under section 3.061G of the county board rules, the Human Service Board hereby request the county board's confirmation of the following appointments. G. Tyler Blake Mills, the AG of Disability and Resource Center Advisory Committee, ADIC, for a three-year term ending July 1st, 2023. And Carol O'Neil Johnson Strick, Wisconsin, for the nutrition project house for a three-year term ending July 1st, 2023.
Motion to approve appointments? So moved by Supervisor Morris, the second. Seconded by Supervisor Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or not? Do we have any public comment of a general nature? Public comment of a general nature? Done, I'll adjourn the motion for adjournment.
Move.
Whatever you want to get for that second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, we are adjourned.